Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Been moved in second by Derek Lundell and Glenn Lundell to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the meeting minutes from September 9th.
So moved to approve.
Moved in second by Derek and...
Yeah, I'll second.
Matt? To approve the meetings of September 9th. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, before we get to the public input, I just want to say thanks to Glenn and Derek for the promotion I got tonight. Public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Please approach the microphone and before speaking, please give your name for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. I think the... Everyone here is for the public hearing, so we're just going to move ahead with that. The public hearing for amending conditional use permit by Casey's for Casey's is now open.
Provide a little introduction and staff report if that's okay with the chair? Okay. Jordan Lilmon is here tonight too, sitting in the back. Jordan's the design engineer for the Casey's project that's before you tonight, and I'm sure he'll be able to answer any questions or perhaps provide some additional input, corrections of what I might say as well as we go, but we'll certainly give him that opportunity as well as the residents. You're all familiar, we have a Casey's general store in town. And back in 2012, that project was approved at that time by conditional use permit, the same ordinance in 2012 as exists today. So the existing Casey's project was approved by conditional use permit in the B2, the business zoning district. What's proposed at this time is to expand onto the neighboring site to the east, Larry Dammer's former building, and the plans that I've handed out that you've seen in the packets. It goes into great detail about the grading, the stormwater, the removal of buildings, existing site conditions, final grading, some retaining walls, concrete sidewalk, additional parking, et cetera. And in order to facilitate that or approve that, there's been a request by the applicant to amend the 2012 conditional use permit. So again, what we're looking at tonight is really the former Larry Dammer property specifically to the east of the building. There won't be any additional building expansion in this proposal. It's simply additional parking, some sidewalks, relocating the dumpster garbage area, and providing additional, you know, gas pumps to serve that site. So again, the former Dammer building's also zoned B2, the highway or the commercial business as well. Behind me on the screen is the civil engineer's plan. I'm a standover at the podium and maybe point a few things out there. Clarification. Here obviously is the existing Casey's store in its current location, current state. The area bounded in yellow here is the property that's subject to the amended conditional use permit. You can see the additional parking that I mentioned would be created here. The refuse areas over here now would be relocated over into this location, and here would be the new additional pumps being added, some on the existing Casey's general store site, some on the former Dammer building property. Additional green area, grading, stormwaters areas over here, as well as Casey has been... Casey's have been working with MINDOT. MINDOT will require... They'll be required to issue a permit here to make changes, not just in the access to the site, but also with stormwater drainage control in that area. Probably recall that the current access, one of the two accesses into Casey's right now is in this location. This is pretty close to the access that went into the Dammer property here, and the proposal here for access would be to abandon the existing access there, relocate it to the east and in this particular location. One of the comments that city engineer Greg Anderson made is to match up the width of this driveway to correspond to the 32 width over here so that they would be the same. There would no longer be any access off of Floyd Street into this property. That will be gone if this project goes ahead. So it seems to be a pretty straightforward proposed expansion. Under our ordinance, we require a number of things that will be partially talked about this evening. Some evolving plans or pending plans will be for final landscaping, that sort of thing. But for the most part, I think they've done a pretty good job of meeting our conditions and requirements under our current ordinance. So tonight again is a public hearing. We've got some neighbors, residents here, that will have the opportunity to speak, ask questions, provide positive, negative feedback to the commission as you make consideration for this application. Jordan, is there anything else that you'd like to say at this point?
I guess I can just be here for questions if that's the easiest way to do it. If anybody has any questions, I'll answer. Hopefully.
If we can open up the...
Okay, we'll open it up for questions or comments from the audience.
Please, please come up to the microphone too and...
They have a voice loud enough to hear.
Consider it an honor.
Oh, thanks. I'll become silent.
Just for the record too, if you can just...
Dave, can you adjust the picture on there so maybe move it up a little bit so it's easier to see on the screen, please?
Better?
Yeah.
Okay, my name's Glenda Cooper.
Can you speak into the mic, Glenda?
Is that the mic?
Yep.
Oops, sorry. Need something to look at. I'm old, can't see that far away. My concern is, I'm right here. That's... This is our house right here. Pam's and mine. This is our garage right here. There's... The wall is up here. Right now, the Dammer property ends right here, if I'm right. It's... It's... I mow it. We mow it. So we take care of probably about three feet, four feet of damaged property, always have, and now what is... Is this going to be grass right here?
Yes.
Yes?
Yep.
Is that going... Is this... This is a new wall, right?
Right.
Okay, and how high is that baby going to be?
About 10 feet, 10 to 12 feet.
The same as the other one?
Correct.
And is there going to be a chain link fence on top of that?
Yes.
With the...
Privacy slats.
Yeah, and that's the garbage?
Yep.
Well, that garbage that's over... That garbage, right there? Yeah, right there. That's usually in our yard, not because of Casey's, because of the garbage people don't know how to empty their containers. And another complaint we have is this whole area, this whole area right here is going to be shining in our house all night, plus the lights. Casey's were nice enough when they first built here, because the gas station used to be up here. Now it's back here, right by us. When they put those lights up, it's like looking at bright lights 24 hours a day. And they were nice enough at 11 o'clock at night to tone them down a little bit, but not to the point that you had to have darkened shades in your house. Well, they look just exactly like regular shades because it doesn't do any good. And the lower you are, like Kathy Clements is on the west side of the building over here, like Pam, and you're low, and so the lights are up here, and it's just... I don't know, I just can't imagine having all that traffic going there, in and out all the time. I mean, because they're so busy. They should have bought property that was that big to begin with, because they're a good store. But I don't know, and then this is the gas tank. Is that diesel?
I'm not 100% sure on that.
Oh, okay. So, and that comes day or night. If big semis can't get in here, how's that truck going to get in here?
Semis get in there anyways, the way it is now.
It's over here, isn't it?
We have semis in there.
Yeah. And yeah, and we got that transferred. When we first watched them dig the holes and stuff, I said, because the gas tanks originally for Fina were over here, over here. And I stood there and watched more people stand on top of those gas tanks and smoke cigarettes. And so I said, could you possibly put the garbage over here and put the gas tanks over here? So they did do that. I mean, they're very cooperative. But this is in our front yard. This is our front yard because our condo has two levels, two up and two below, two on Floyd and two on Park. It's a... It's two levels, four level, but I don't know, it just... To me, it just seems like... And then you got a cul-de-sac down here with other families in it. Any other things you want me to mention?
Isn't there going to be a fence on the south side of that property?
Yep. Just on the retaining wall, not on the property line.
Yeah, and a retaining wall, but that fence can't... They put something on that fence so the cars pulling in to fuel up, their lights aren't going to shine through that?
There shouldn't be privacy slats, so there shouldn't be any light coming through that. You're probably getting the light from the canopy, which I'm wondering if we put a taller fence in, would that block the canopy, or is it just barely over the fence, or can you see it plain as day?
I don't see... I very see very little traffic come into Casey's, and I'm on the east side, except on the east side, and they're parked because there's no parking up by the building anymore. And I don't smell gas because of the gas tanks are at the other end, but overhead lights are really...
Those are the ones that kind of cause a problem.
Yeah, and they're on that high beam until 11 o'clock at night. It depends on who's working there, who's turns them down, who doesn't.
And I know the people that designed the lighting for Casey's stores, they can show like a photometric of where the light should shine, so I think that they can design the lights with less brightness, I guess, closer to the south end. I'm not sure what their plan is, if they're going to put any towers up with lights on them, but I'm sure there'll be at least one or two more. But I can definitely... We can definitely look at phonometrics to make sure that it doesn't come over the property line, because I know lighting is a pollution, so it's not supposed to go over the property line.
And I see you got your sign down here at this end now instead of...
It's on the northeast end.
Yeah.
Yep. It's just relocated straight east.
Is that going to show to the highway?
Yeah, that's a good question.
That doesn't throw off that much light though, does it?
The sign doesn't, no, except when it was in our backyard, points that way.
I mean, diesel tanks, do they have?
Do they have any now?
Yes, they do.
So that's probably gas now, because they probably will keep the same one as diesel and now they'll have two gas ones. Would be my guess.
Because they only have diesel on pumps, one is...
Yep.
One and eight.
Okay. Very left edge.
So that's on the west end?
Yeah, the west edge, yep. On the far west end, those are the diesel?
This is... They have... Okay, so they have diesel on this end, and then they have diesel on this end. There's eight pumps here. So it's this end and this end, and there are semis that do come in there.
Yeah.
Really?
It's a tight parking lot, but they do make it in. We have several accidents up there. I would agree with additional parking, that they do need that. I don't want to... This is me right here. I live right there. I see that wall, and I see Casey's the way it is. This is my bedroom right over here on this side. I get all that light in my bedrooms. I don't want it right in my backyard behind me and have lights coming in my back. I've got one, two, three windows back here. That's going to come right in my house. I already got it on this side of my house.
Well, really, the whole yard is lit up.
Yeah. And there's garbage that, right now where the dumpsters are at, this garbage gets taken, it's blown in the yard, and because we're an association, we pay to have our yard mowed, and they don't get out the lawnmowers, and they don't pick up the trash. They run it over and it just gets scattered and cut up to pieces. So trash is a big deal. There are people smoke out here, they throw their cigarette butts through the fence.
And the public.
Yeah. I'm a Casey's employee, so I see what's going on there. And I personally, it's close enough for me the way it is. I just bought my place not even a year ago, and this was my main hesitation when I bought this home. And I was assured at that time that Casey's was not interested in buying this building because of the elevation level difference. And here I am 11 months into being here, and I not only have Casey's right there, which was my choice to begin with when I moved there, but now they want to put it in my backyard, and I don't... We don't have a front yard.
This is our front yard.
Yeah, this is our yard. This is all we got, and our garage comes out like this.
What's there now, south of Dammer's? Is it just a ridge that goes down, or...
South? It would be just the parking lot and back.
Between you and Dammer's?
The parking lot and back.
Dammer's is two levels too.
Oh, okay, I guess I haven't...
And it's got the front parking lot, and then they got the lower, which was Farmer's Mutual or something.
Oh.
Yeah.
Or the surveyors used to be there.
And you do occasionally, and I have seen it on my bedroom windows here, there is people that come and hang out up here, in the back of Casey's.
And that walk is going around, isn't it?
This... Yeah, they have a sidewalk in the back of their building.
Yeah, and that's the sidewalk, too.
That's what they're proposing there, I think, is a sidewalk. This is a sidewalk, Jeremy?
No, that's grass, here.
Oh, this is grass?
Yep.
So who's responsible to mow this grass, because your wall's right here?
The wall is just north of that.
Right here, or here?
Yep, that's the wall. That's the property line.
So they're going to have grass there, so the wall would be there and then the grass, so...
Yep.
Once again, you've got the same situation that you have right here. So you're going to have the trash and cigarette butts, people littering, and people hanging out, smoking people.
So the fence is there now, isn't it?
No.
No.
I mean, I can't set... I can't, because Glenda and I, this is our only yard we have, we don't have a door to the front of our place to look out to the street, the opposite direction of Casey's. So we have this little area right here that we sit in, that's our yard. I don't want to look out, I've already got a wall to the left of me, I don't want to look out and look up at a cement wall and then have a fence going around there.
We used to have a great big 150-year-old oak right there, and the high winds last year, the year before, took it down. Well, it was designated that more of it was on our property than on Dammer's, so naturally you know who got that cost was me, us. And that was 4,000 bucks to remove that tree. Well, we're a condo of four.
And that just totally opened up this whole...
Yeah, so now we see your wall.
Yeah, we see Casey's wall, and we see the dumpster. People come out, this is where they smoke, employees smoke, they go right there in the dumpster area. We... Glenda and I sit right here. I'm not a smoker.
I was.
I was too at one point, but you don't want to say.
I know.
So you've got all that trash that comes not only from people just being disrespectful and dropping their trash as they go and not stopping and picking it up, from the garbage cans out at the pumps overflowing, and then garbage will come out of there from when those dumpsters get dumped. Those things are so full that trash comes out of there.
You should hear them.
Oh, and you can hear them when they drop those containers.
Oh, yeah.
They drop them.
I know.
Yeah, it's very loud. I mean, you hear it in the store, I hear it in my house, and my bedrooms are right there.
Now, what is this? Right there.
Right here?
Yeah.
That's all green space.
Is that all grass?
Yep.
So how much are they going to have people? Another concern that I have is how much are they going to have people, because we get a lot of traffic off the highway. A lot of people will let their dogs out on leashes, most of them, and this is where the dogs go to the bathroom. So what's going to stop them from going over here and down in here?
I should say one thing that you don't see on this plan, Jordan, you can comment on this. I mean, where your yard is, you're about 16 feet lower than what the parking lot elevation will be at Casey's, so you're going to be like this. So while that wall is 10 feet, there's another six feet or so of grade and green area that's going to flow back down towards you with the water going out to the street. So it actually is... There's going to be green area from your yard going up towards the 10-foot retaining wall, and then on top of the 10-foot retaining wall is about 16 feet higher than right at the edge of your home. So again, I think it's a planning issue for Casey's and Jordan to take into effect in terms of the sightlines, the landscaping. We don't have a landscaping plan yet, other than we know what the green area will be. But I think the noise, the dumpster area, the fencing, if there's going to be fencing, the control of the pedestrians. I wouldn't expect people with dogs will do what they're going to do, but I mean, there's going to be that whole area on the east side and the south side is going to be graded, so it's not level land. It's not necessarily going to restrict people from taking their pets.
So that water's going to run down Floyd to the cul-de-sac?
Jordan can... Yeah, he can talk about the stormwater plan.
You should come and watch the water run down Floyd now to the cul-de-sac.
Yep.
And you would think twice, because it's...
The only difference is before it was all hard surface and none of it infiltrated. Now it'll be green space, and now some of it will go into the ground before it even gets to the street, so less water will be going to Floyd Street.
All of water from the parking lot will be controlled.
Correct. It's all going hard. Everything from the parking lot is now going into MINDOT's edge.
Out to Highway 19.
Yep.
Yeah, because that's what they did when they moved there. They went, made it flow that direction.
That will maybe explain it a little bit more clearly, but... So again, with the existing land use that's there, this property is substantially developed with buildings and parking area, with impervious area. So it will still be impervious up here on that parking area that Casey's proposing to build, but this area and this area will all be green space then in here. And then obviously, they're expanding some areas out here too in the highway right of way. So they'll be eliminating the parking down here and the access and the driveway over here, and that'll be transformed into green space.
So how far in from our yard to their yard does that have to be?
It shows 21 feet. Yeah, 21 and a half feet.
So it's going to take some of our yard away?
No, no, they're going to add 21 feet from your property line. 21 feet of green space. Yeah.
Because here we are.
This is all green here.
That's all green there and here.
And over here, yeah.
So where that lower level parking is, it looks like that'll be turned into green space another 21 and .6 feet.
Correct. So again, it'll be somewhere 21 feet in here, so let's say this'll...
That's all green.
This bit of blacktop, yeah, this blacktop will go away.
Here we are.
So there actually, I mean, in terms of what's there today, in some respects, there could be some benefits to you as a neighboring property, or not all, but certainly some, given that a lot of blacktop's going to be removed, as is the building.
Is it, Jordan?
Yep.
Do you know with that green space, will there be any trees, or is it just going to be...
That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, that'd be...
What do you feel about pine trees?
I love them.
I think we could put some pine trees there and you would never see that wall.
You like them?
We don't have a landscape plan. We've got a green area plan and a grading plan, but we don't have a landscape plan yet from Casey's, which would be required under our ordinance.
Casey's is very accommodating, so whatever, if you want some pine trees there, I'm pretty
sure I can get that done.
Well, we planted over here, we planted pine trees to take the place of the big oak.
I think if you got some pine trees, that'd help with the light a little bit too, even though...
They're going to be clear above the pine trees.
Jordan, a question for you. Do you...
I haven't asked to talk to Casey yet, but when... If this plan goes ahead and they do relocate this over here, what... Is there a plan for this area then?
That's all just going to be green.
They'll be green space too?
They'll be flat and green.
Well...
At the same elevation as the parking lot.
Yep, it'll be high.
Yeah.
And there's a wall there.
The pets are going anywhere, they're probably going there.
That's true. That's where the garbage currently is, but then it's moving.
Right.
Is the reason for moving the garbage area just to make it more convenient for the garbage truck? That's what I figured.
Oh, yeah, straight in shot, it looks like.
I mean, they kept it clean, but you have to go tell them.
They're good, yes. They're good about taking care of it, but you know, it's...
It's not... I have never noticed it being stinky. Have you? You live closer?
Yeah, I haven't... I can't say I've noticed it from my home, no, but I... The dumpster area itself in the summertime, yes, because we are such a busy store. So then they would be moving the dumpster area over here, which would... Right here. Oh, that's a dumpster, yeah. And how much is this wall that would be, how many feet high? How much is that going to block us in that we're like living in a box here? We got a wall over here and we got a wall here.
I think they're going to have a better view from their... To Casey's, than what they got.
Yeah, maybe you can have Jordan come up and show you.
Do you need questions?
I just said that, how much... Okay, we have this wall right here existing now that we look at, you know? Obviously, you're going to build up this side to match up here for the elevation. So how much is that going to block us in, like, so now we're looking out, I'm looking to the left, I see a big wall, I look straight out and it's wall. Am I going to feel... And then we got our garage over here, am I going to feel like I'm in a box?
You'll feel nice and private.
Dave, maybe if you could...
Yeah.
Could you reveal where the existing Dammer, the existing south wall of the Dammer building is in relation to the new retaining wall?
The existing parking lot is like right here, the edge of it, right? There's like maybe five feet of grass before the parking lot from the property line?
Yeah.
There you go.
That's the existing Dammer building here.
Yep.
And here's the house here, so you can get some feel. I mean, this is... It's hard on this because it's a small plan, but the 21 feet is like right in here. So it's...
So we're getting about 21 more feet of grass.
To what you have now, yes.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that building must be...
Because all we see now is this pretty black parking lot back in the...
So you got about half of that parking lot is getting...
Yeah.
It's going to be green space.
And so is this... How far outside, we're all going to go this way? That far?
Looks like it's going to connect with the wall that's there now.
Oh, I see right there.
And there's a corner house.
And then it turns.
And it goes this way.
Then it goes that way?
Yep. And then it slowly gets smaller and smaller until it gets nothing.
Just like it does right now.
Yep.
That's parking here and that's parking there.
Yep.
So your property starts to go up that hill anyway. Here's the 948 elevation, so it's starting to go up already, up to Dammer's property. And this is just the finished grade, so that here again is the wall, and this is where it's sloping back to match into your property, and then around the corner to Floyd.
But it'll go up to the property line and then down a little bit, just so water can get out here instead of going towards your house. And what I was saying is if we put pine trees here, then you wouldn't see the wall, but I guess...
but I guess... If you want us to do that, we definitely can.
And they could put some kinda ivy on the wall, too, so the...
Yep.
Kinda cover, so you're not looking at concrete, you're looking at some kinda ivy.
Yeah.
That stuff kinda...
Get the high school art class to draw a mural on there.
There you go.
And Casey's did with the original conditional use permit, did come back with, that's a cast-in-place concrete wall, but it's got some texture on it as well. So I don't know what the treatment's gonna be for this, probably to match, but that change was made before the original Casey's was built, to have some, have at least some contrast on the wall itself.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak on this open, public input? For the third and last time, anyone wishing to speak? And I will close the public hearing. Permission?
Well, I mean, Lord knows, Casey's probably could use a lot more room. I go there quite a bit, and sometimes you can't even find a place to park or get gas. My two concerns when I first saw it were drainage, which at least appears that that should be okay, and the light. I don't live by it, but I, when you drive by Senex late at night, it is so bright there, I feel bad for those neighbors across the street. But if we can get the signs at the right height, so that they're blocked by the, that stuff on the fence, whatever it's called, and that should keep lights out, too. So if they can make sure that they do whatever they can to keep the light as much as they can out of their house, that would be my, I guess, my biggest concern.
Matt?
I'm pretty new to this game, but it sounds like Casey's is very willing to put some trees in that green space to try to mitigate the light, possibly even talk to the store and see if they can tone down the light at the right hours. And I agree with what Derek said, it's a very busy store, I think that looks like responsible use, as long as they're good neighbors.
What?
I, they've said everything I was gonna bring up, that as long as the lighting is kinda taken care of, and they seem like they're willing to kinda cover the wall, so they aren't looking right at a concrete wall.
Yeah.
And, I don't know, they maybe could put in something with the garbage, too, if they're getting a lot of garbage down there. Either they have to empty the dumpsters a little more often, or the garbage people have to be responsible for something there, too.
Well, and your lawn service? I'd talk to those guys, they can get off there, they can pick that up instead of running it over and just spraying it all over the place again.
There's an art, part of that, though, is that our lawn service that does it, that strip there between the dammer building and Casey's.
Oh.
That is where a lot of it comes from, because it's coming over the wall.
Oh.
And then it's not so much our lawn mower company, it's whoever mows that strip in there.
And they just...
Coming along, and they just run everything over, and it just shreds it all to pieces.
Oh, no.
And it blows.
Yeah.
I mean, I've had Casey's stuff at my back door.
Mm-hmm.
Casey's Garage Street.
So could Casey's, could they have someone, once a week or so, just go down, spend a half hour and pick up garbage? Do they do that now, or...
They do not do it on a regular basis now, unless, if we call, then yes.
Yeah, okay. So maybe that's something they could just plan on, like, once a week, or maybe even more if it needs to be.
Yep.
It shouldn't have to be our job.
Shouldn't have to be, but...
I'm retired, and I'm old. I have to argue with everybody.
Who's your hauler now, garbage hauler now, who serves you guys?
It's, oh shoot.
I think it's Countryside, ain't it?
Is it Countryside?
Showroom, who does...
Waste Management, is it?
Waste Management, Jay showroom, showroom works for me, yeah.
Oh, is he, okay. I thought it was Countryside.
And the way it is now, our dumpsters are emptied on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Tuesday is the cardboard dumpster, so you get, let's see, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. The only day that there is not garbage or dumpster being dumped is on Thursday. And those things are loud.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And they do not, they no longer will, they used to pick up the garbage in front of the dumpsters because the dumpsters got so full. But now they don't. Somebody has to go out there, they won't...
Really?
The company won't go out and pick up the garbage bags in front of the dumpsters. That has to be done by a Casey's employee, to, and then dump those trucks. And so it's just, it's just a mess, and then you gotta worry about...
You got the wrong garbage man.
Well, he's on a, he's on a time limit, though. He's gotta, when he pulls into Casey's, he's gotta count for his time that, and a lot of times he has to wait, because people park in front of the gate, that fenced-in area. And it's not only just employees that sometimes make the mistake of parking there, it's customers. And then they have to leave their cars, and the garbage man can't get in there.
Dave, when are they planning on, when would they plan on starting this spring?
Yeah, next, next spring.
Yes, okay.
Starting this spring? How long's it gonna take them all summer?
I don't like so, they're pretty quite usually, but that is a lot of dirt.
Yeah, there's gonna be a... Don't open your eyes.
I would say the concerns that have been brought up tonight to the commission, those are things that are all within our purview under our amended conditional use permit to require, or at least strongly push with Casey's to address. And they probably got some alternatives here, I think, Jordan. I mean, obviously Casey's has a lot of stores and deals with us all the time, and maybe they can come back with some treatments that will really respond to what the neighbors are most concerned about here, and go from there. But again, the resolution, the draft resolution that has been presented to you tonight, particularly under the "now therefore be it resolved" at the end, talks specifically about ordinance section 152-648, doesn't mean that much, but we have a very specific set of standards for this type, this type of use developing in this area. So those conditions have to be met, and specifically, we've identified landscaping, exterior lighting, and stormwater management as being kinda the most important standards that we really have to pay much closer to attention here, closer attention to.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the amended conditional use permit, resolution
You can all second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution 201-9-10. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Now, we're just approving it to move it to the council, correct?
Correct.
That being all the business there is, is there any other comments?
Nothing for me.
Nothing here.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Oh, you go ahead.
Moved and seconded to adjourn the planning commission for December 9th. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.